Alright, I would like to call our meeting to order at 6:08 PM on September 3rd. We just started building a walk-through, it went fairly well, I think there's anything more that we need to look out before we leave tonight, we can kind of still poke around if that's alright with you gentlemen. But all looks good in terms of the putting everything back together for the new project this summer, so that's great. Thank you very much for being here today for coming tonight. If anybody in the audience would like to be acknowledged, just get ready for this time. We have minutes circulating from our July meeting, if everyone's had a chance to take a look at them, I think a motion to approve done. And a motion to approve the minutes from July 2nd, 2019.
Sorry.
Keep those in mind.
Alright.
Warrants are circulating, I'll cover it away. I don't have any correspondence or reports at this time, does anyone else?
Set the first meeting is September 18th at 6:30.
Unflinched business, I don't have anything, we're all kind of getting ready to swing and things, so.
We are.
Let's swing in. New business, other than building and plus, which is already on here, I don't have anything. Future agenda items, again, I don't know if by the end of this meeting we're gonna wanna stick something on there later, but we can revisit that, unless somebody has something they wanna put up there. Standing committee's policy.
We have a tentative meeting scheduled for September 23rd, is that the Monday? At 7 o'clock, which, at 6 o'clock is the meeting, which is after the Denet's board committee meeting. It's either the 23rd or the 25th.
23rd.
23rd, I knew that, thank you. 9:23 at 6 o'clock, an email went out, and we have four policies that we bring forward, so it's a nice quick, easy one.
I think that's me, I'm trying to remember who my babble is.
I know, I think it's Alex, somewhere Alex.
I didn't either, I don't even know who it's like now, but we can figure that out.
The policy is, I know, yeah, we can make that, if not.
You mean both of us, right?
Nope. Alright, they said it's just four, four policies.
Alright, we'll babble a little bit, if I'm lost, we'll be back.
Not only babble, and it will be at Den.
Negotiations have not been, had not been, and obviously been in for the year. Is this, are we this year? Okay.
Yep.
To be fun.
Yep.
Pat, we don't need to talk.
Great.
Ethan Rapp, I did speak to Mick Steele, the summer hoops went fabulously, as always, big success, kids well in, you know, both the volunteers and little kids, so that was great. He did mention that the floors were gonna be getting done at the gym, which they are done, we just saw them, they look fantastic, and they're being used, so that's great. And the only other thing that he mentioned was, you know, how pleased he was that the project, the project was completed, which we are all very thrilled about that, and that the after-school programs are gonna be ramping up, I don't know if you guys are gonna touch on that at all when you do it before, you didn't really get into detail with me about it, after-school programs, and everything else kind of just fits around throughout the summer, the building was being used.
For those.
Are you gonna touch on the after-school programs at all here? When you talk, I don't think he had planned that.
You don't have to, it's fine.
He didn't give me any detail about it, he just said that they were gonna start ramping up, I'm sure everybody's gonna get a little bit involved in their parent square and all that stuff, which I like that parent square, that's cool.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. PTO.
Sorry, I jumped in there.
No, you're fine.
Meeting's number 18, 6:30.
Okay.
Up front.
Are you?
I'll be there, yes, maybe you'll be there.
Double budget?
Nope.
Not yet. And in review.
No meetings, but maybe I'll speak to the superintendent for that side.
Yes, so we're having our initial meeting next Wednesday, and it will just be to go over, to talk about the kinds of questions that we wanna ask as a committee, and questions that come from parents and staff to ask during our search for the new superintendent.
Thank you, and I'm meeting 31, Matt, I'm gonna wait up and schedule. Great.
So enrollment is down to 86, wow, this year. Kindergarten, it's a little on the smaller side, it kind of does shock her.
How many kids in there?
64, not 18, actually, after that, yeah.
Your parents are sitting in the saddle, the baby force. So you're very excited at the dog star.
It's strange, because all the other grade levels are pretty much like maybes, besides our third grade, and.
Which is high, right?
Huge.
Like a hundred.
Yeah, a hundred and third, and then there's like any more than. Inside, but sometimes you get those.
Weird day, yeah, what a weird day.
So opening day, everyone was kind of in a shock to see that our third summer project was completed and finished. So we were all kind of definitely excited to get a kickoff to the year, we were very pleased with the project. Teachers were a little anxious about getting in the classrooms, because it was a little bit on the later side. Usually teachers would come in August 1st, and they're ready to roll, but this one we had to wait kind of until we forced school to happen, so. But the opening was smooth, the custodians were fantastic, they pulled it together. If you'd come into the building 10 days before, you would've probably questioned, okay, this is getting done, but Matt, Josh, Billy, and Ron, and really, they really did fill themselves, getting everything together. And the building the size, and the timing of things that need to get done and completed, it's just pretty amazing, so. Can't think of another. Our trailer's gone, it's gone, it's scheduled, who goes to Ellen, who had to live with myself and Brian and Matt, and this cozy little trailer. I'm a little distressed. I'd say I would love to do it again, but I was happy to see the trailer go.
It was a decent trailer.
It was, it was nice, and it was amazing. But we wanna thank you, you know, we appreciate all the support from the community and the town, so, it was great. The town also helped us, they did send over some of their employees to help us, and it's good to see that, so we appreciate that. There was a lot of also positive feedback, Jill's not here, but she has some type of write-up about Tom Mari, who came in and did our keynote, which was fantastic, people really enjoyed the message he had for us. And they were excited and just energetic, I think, we were sitting in the front row, and there was like a tear in his eye at one point, it was like, wow, this guy. It was pretty amazing. He is, he's fantastic. He was a former teacher, principal, administrator, now he just goes around and travels, he's really good.
We split him with other districts.
That's right, he ran from here and he went up to the dog star.
Yeah.
So, he was really good, definitely, he had a great message, can't stand out the part. Kindergarten is started on, we had open house on that Wednesday, which is always a challenge, but PTO does pretty much most of the light work, so we wanna thank them as well. They plan everything out in the all-purpose room, where they have folders, they have name tags, they have bus tags, it's just a fantastic job, and what they do is they split time with the PTO group, and then the other half goes in with the teachers, and the teachers do a little bit of a presentation in their rooms, and then Brian and I hop on bus, and take on the bus, actually, with just the students, parents don't, so, it's interesting. You do, they're all good, cameras, we'll bring them back, I promise. So we just kind of take a trip, either down to the country club, or we'll go, that's what I think we did, highlands. And then Thursday was the day that kindergarten came in, and they kicked it off, and it was great.
Have the kids got on the right bus?
They did, they did get on. That's usually what we want, we send out the extra reserves to help with kindergarten getting on the bus, because no matter how much they have a tag on their clothes, they have the person that they're supposed to follow, they're holding a hand on the other person, and still one tends to be a lot.
Call my friend!
So you really do have to make sure you get home in front, middle of the hour. New staff, a long list here, so I had to make sure. So the first group there is just new staff at AGS, and then down below is new assignments. So we felt that it was important, because there was some shifts around that we wanted to kind of point out. So the new staff, we have Lauren Bell is in first grade, she's coming to us as, was a teacher in Brockton for a number of years in first grade, she stepped in very nicely so far. Kim Sissoni is in for our office, our professional, she lives in town, she's a student, she's a little one, nice school, I believe. She's been on school information, she's been on PTO, she's been on school council, so she really has jumped in and has really got understanding of the crazy that goes on in the main office, where she and Ellen are working together. Melissa Cody is our new behaviorist, she was present at the Mays Center for quite some time, and we jumped in, let's, we're hoping that this one sits around for a little bit, would be nice. And that component there, she actually, when I jump, skip over Haley, when I jump to Jamie, she's running the adjustment council. Jamie and Melissa both worked at the May Center for several years, so they, and they also live in the same town, they've got a great partnership, we're excited to have them on both of us.
Is Jamie replacing the adjustment council from three years?
Yes, so.
I didn't know if you're not going to.
No. Unfortunately, our adjustment council, Sarah Machado, she had left.
Unexpectedly, middle of July.
July, so. Jamie kind of was down in Mashpee, actually, so she had quite a commute, and she kind of threw her hat in the rain, and we're excited, she's on board, she's definitely qualified, she's been, has been the adjustment counselor in Mashpee Public Schools for like three years now, so we're excited to have her, so, just kind of a nice thing, she's on 10 minutes away, so. Haley McAllister is the new parent professional that's on board, she actually is Silver Lake, right, perhaps, is teacher certified, SEI endorsed, so we're excited to have her, she could teach late today, so we're excited to have her on board as well. And Caitlin Woodman is our new grade three teacher, she actually went here, her mom is over in.
K D I C.
Yes. Been with her for a while, so she, Caitlin has been in the Stowe Public Schools for a couple of years, and this opportunity came up to come back home, so she's here. And then all of those new assignments, so we, I'll just go through those. Gail Belter, who's been teaching fifth grade for a while, is now joining the fourth grade team. Marlene Brenner, who just retired from teaching first grade, can't leave, she's now doing title one. Lori Lacy, following Mrs. Rabel, she was in fourth grade, and now she's moving up to fifth grade. Where she'll just be teaching that now. And Erin Magnani was our long-term substitute for the behaviors position, and she's now one of the parent professional. A lot with the new behavior, so, because she does have that background and experience. Faith Smith was the long-term sub for Gail Belter, when she left last year, and she also decided to stay on board, she is a licensed teacher, she is taking the parent professional role. Margie Sullivan has been in title one for us, so last year, I think she was in Canton for a little bit, and now she is taking over for first grade, on Cal-Canada's tenth person for the year, fully. Rosemary Tannelli was formerly grade three, is now back in grade two, which she was for a number of years. She's not, she's a spot, like, wanting to go back to grade two. And Judy Trosky, who has been in grade three for a number of years, is now joining the fourth grade team. A lot of moves, but people are on board, we strengthened all the teams throughout, eight through six, so we're happy. I think a lot of people are good players. It's not the less fire suppression, it's done, it's, I think that's all I need to say, it's fantastic.
I'm used to hearing that.
Hey, just great company, all around. From, you know, the construction companies to fire suppression guys that were putting them in, which is, can't stand that. So, excited, they were organized, they were timely, they addressed needs, even if it came up, and we had issues, especially with the gyms, and they addressed it, so, they were a great team, can't stand out the part.
Hi, didn't even know they were here. Can we go?
It's pretty amazing, I mean, it was gross, it was disgusting, it was just dust and dirt everywhere, and the way they came in, in terms of where the demo crew would come into the area, and they would do their thing, and then the pipe fitters came in, and they did their thing, and it was pretty amazing, and then they tested, I think that was part of the, the timing of everything, the testing was definitely something sometime, and making sure that it wasn't anywhere, and then after that, they would send in a cleanup crew, cleanup crew would take off all, because every single piece, square footage of the building was covered in glass. They came in, cleaned it up, and then our heads kind of jumped in, fantastic. Aside from Johnny from science, Ellis for fire, oh, I'm sorry.
I think they're getting.
I think it's in the works, I think Jason, the fire chief is clarifying that the signs are not.
Hang on.
I think it was just a misinterpretation on the.
No, no, that's not, honestly, once you see them, it's like, you can't miss them. They're enormous.
It was just a misreading of.
No, but they're obnoxious.
So, excited, we'll hold on to any other projects we're good. And Parent Square is a new communication tool that is replacing Swift Reach. Swift Reach was what we had used to send out email last, post on Facebook, trying, just form that we use, it's a whole different piece, but now, there's a new product, it is called Parent Square, it's a piloted Parent Square up at the high school last year, and there's a lot of positive feedback, I think, from our employee, I don't know, I know Michaela Gill, the principal, up there, she uses it a lot, and.
Well, I like it, because now I don't have to go on Facebook, I don't have to data my email, I can just have it all written in one little, you know?
I think that's the goal, too, it's a lot more, because you can teach as a teacher, some people have been using Dojo, some people are using email, some people are mine, now it's all on Blackboard, which is a district, well, it's not private, and it's where people use email privately. That's the goal, that's why we jumped on board.
And it's everything that I like, so I went to the high school on morning, what do you do, I get, I vote, yeah, I like that.
And that's where, even though we were pushing communication as much as possible, and in as many different forms as possible, whether it be your website, email, communication, or some type of social media, and a lot of the staff jumped on board with that, which is great, but some just gravitated towards whatever social media they were comfortable with, so someone on Twitter, someone on Vermont, some on the blogs, someone on Dojo, and so parents, I think we're experiencing each year, it could be something, something different. So, we're actually glad that Parent Square is kind of up there now, it's pretty easy to use. There are chairs, oh, we can actually see who's using everything, in terms of like sort of products, it's an app on the phone. So Brian and I will see.
Oh, you mean you can see the building?
We can see every teacher that's posted for us, we can actually run reports on who's getting it as an email, who's getting it as a text message, who's getting it as a phone, we can actually see who opens it, so it's, it's pretty amazing, like, how, how much information is there, it's kind of neat, so we're, but we're still figuring out the announcements, but it's, it's pretty easy. So we're encouraged of teachers to use it, Dave Murphy's coming to our staff, we need to train this, Brian and I, we just started training on last Tuesday, last Tuesday, so, it's pretty, we're excited about it, I think it's pretty easy to use, and. It's basically like Facebook, just a little bit on user friendly, and it's licensed by the district. Well, people, I do believe people can comment.
Oh!
Now, one, I think, you know, there definitely is an option, I don't know if we turned it off or not, or. Like, our messages, we send out busters, you can't do those comments, Dave should send it out, sorry, he can like those comments.
I don't know if they get posted or not, though, maybe, like, if we get a comment, I don't think it'll be, maybe.
I think I may just go with last. So they start at 6:00. Learn how to use.
When you click comment, it says, this comment is private, only you and Michaela Gill can view your comment, this email will be sent to Michaela Gill only.
So that's.
It's not really much.
Yeah, you don't need to, well, you know, fire.
No, no.
But you can like, like it, put the heart, like, love the posts, right, but, yeah.
I can't figure out how to add another student, it's one of my kids.
Maybe your other classroom teacher is using it.
Like you said, they're, they're beginning to figure it out.
Good, no, I just didn't, I thought it came from the district.
Well, they are from the district, and I love that the calendar is.
We are trying with grade five, sorry, I didn't.
Nope.
Grade five and six, because they're.
Right.
A full team, we asked David Murphy if he can actually just have them be a full grade team, so whenever they communicate, they communicate to the whole grade.
Yeah, because I got a bunch of stuff today from Savage, who neither of my kids have, as like their main teacher.
See, that's, see, that's what I'm thinking, too, so I believe she's communicating for the regular.
Right, right, that's probably what it is, okay.
So maybe we can.
Yeah, I wonder, yeah, but I have two kids in the same grade, so that might be why.
I know, but I think it says, just says her, it says Katie Savage's name.
Yeah.
So if people like, don't have Katie as a whole, Rome, may not be even looking at it, because.
Gotcha, thinking it's for them, yeah.
Okay, maybe there's a way we can, because I'm looking at it too, and I see all Katie Savages, but I'm thinking it was all different kids from different classrooms.
In fact, this, my daughter's even has a false sports thing on her too, so the coach must be using it for the sports, so that's even more awesome. So it not only has her classes, but then it has like extracurricular stuff on there too, at least this.
So.
So will their grades be on there too? Like the Power School or whatever, that's separate, so this is just for like announcements and pictures, and so it's almost like a social media for the school.
Yeah.
But not grades?
No, no.
I mean, the one thing they can upload is, takes the information, the names of students from Power School, and uploads into this, into Power School.
But not their, like, updated data?
No, no, it's just like, the names in there.
Oh.
Who they're assigned to, so that was the case. So who, Cameron?
So Cameron is on there, and she has Lacy, Caitlin is not on there, and she has Bell.
Wait, did you get Bell's key's post?
That doesn't make any sense.
Sorry.
I know, sorry.
Did people get Bell's key? Right, but I'm wondering if someone wants to.
Mr. Bodry.
Oh.
Did you see the last email that went out at 4:30 today, that said this meeting started at 6:30? We did see that, yes, we did see that.
That was.
Unfortunately, that was in the stack, I think.
There's no way of adding it.
I don't know where.
What do we miss? Anything good?
No, I'm still talking, so it's like. You started talking at 6:00. I was trying.
This isn't Bell's key.
That's it, it would've been her, but that's fine. But I'm wondering if all the superiors get involved in the same messages, and it wouldn't have mattered if I just had one kid up.
Just many days.
Yeah. But still.
Did you see Bell's key's post about? I think I called the school.
No, about what picture?
Picture name? She posted at.
Wait, so when you click on a class that doesn't say fifth grade, and then the teacher's name. And then in her files, it says fifth grade Bell's key, and there's the after-school sports registration, allergy.
No, because I don't have a Bell's key, I don't have a bad way to click on Bell's key, maybe click on Lacy, I'll use. Go to classes.
So we're hiring.
Yeah, so, so it does say fifth grade Bell's key on the home.
Right, and I have to, just because I just have here, I don't have Caitlin. And then to school. So we have, there's something. Oh, I did get the Bell's key one, I did get it, pictured it five hours ago, right?
Yeah?
Yeah, I did get that.
But Caitlin's not showing up?
But Caitlin's not showing up, but it must've gone to all the fifth grade kids, that's why I got it, because it technically was on camera.
Alright, I'll ask David Murphy.
See, if it has something to do with the fact that they're twins and they're in the same grade, and the fifth grade's all getting the same messages. I just.
Those are just changes, so it just says grade five, doesn't say the specific teacher?
Yeah.
That they, like, you can see.
It's just from that teacher, if they don't have that teacher, I don't think we're gonna.
But I mean, how would you know that? She's having twins.
Right, there's six sets in that grade. No way! I figured that was the 15% of the kids are twins.
Are you done now?
Yes, I am, sorry.
Brian, you wanna chime in here?
Alright, what's happening?
I don't have nearly as much to say. In Jordan, I just discovered that Inupiaq, it's not my angel.
Is that what you're talking about?
There is not one of mine.
I think I'm blind.
Everything's yellow, so.
I was sharing together, I know, with my angel. No, that's a close-up, that's a close-up, is that for your last? So just in a, I was looking for you, boy. There was nothing that's happened, I'm seeing what we're trying to accomplish, as a part of our job, I've been.
I hope not, yeah. That really was terrible.
We have, we have, I mean, we didn't quantify that we're aware, as of this moment in time, the one thing that is not uncovered here, is spent tuition and transportation, some are, some are confirmed, we have a few that are still working with, because we haven't finalized any cost tuitionings for the special education programs, so we need to finalize those costs, we need to confirm tuition. according to current tuitioning for students. I'm just vocational saving. We have, we have still started, but I must be sure everybody is doing it separately so we can have the tuition as well as the transportation. So as a breakdown, okay. Did we have all the kids? We have had some surprises, okay? We have some that we didn't tell all the time. So we're trying to confirm all the students that we have. Not everybody went, but majority of the ones that can apply that we're aware. So we need to those to experience, we have a new student. So we're trying to just confirm. So are three different schools? We're confirming with the schools, with the transportation companies. So that's again, it's two separate transportation companies. So we just want to confirm forward and forward with file numbers.
That's probably.
Okay, at this moment. Only other thing I want to say is that we did have single signature warrants. Mr. Johnson came inside for us.
He's mom.
He did. He was very, we, he was very responsive. He came on a spin inside, he said warrants. Totally one hundred sixteen thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars and nine cents. Thank you very much.
I knew we kept yours.
I have a question on the warrants. Did we receive all the back order books?
I believe we received, if you notice, people, the employees that you'll see.
They break it out.
Right, they, they break it out. It tells what, what is not in it. And then the next invoice shows what's not in it, what has come in, sort of everything. I actually went through those when I was.
They all hatch up.
There's so many, seventy thousand dollars.
I think it wasn't just a process, it just doesn't say.
Right, and then what happens is send the, to pay in what's going to be received, the invoice, the merchandise is received. So that means that they're confirming. But yeah, they made it quite isolated, but it's with the vast majority.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So Jill was unable to be here this evening. So I just wanted to let you know that she included, she had done a professional development schedule, which has been updated, just to share with you the information on that. And it's that, a quick little short assessment update. You from one of my.
This is my class. Oh, there it is. It was my class.
And then she also did an update that says every month, just sort of to give you an idea of some of the things that have happened. As Kaye mentioned, the keynote speaker for opening day was extremely dope, you see. The thing I really wanted to mention, though, was Brenda Lassar was wonderful and got some of our kids together from Halifax. And the parents drove them up. I love having the kids sing or do something for us for opening day. It just, it's wonderful. And this year, she worked with George Bento from Kingston Intermediate School. So we had Kingston and Halifax kids sing together. And I have to tell you, these kids and the parents were astounding. So the kids all come in, it's eight in the morning. They did, I think, only one practice. So two different schools, kids that didn't know each other, got together, the two music teachers taught them both the songs. They get up on stage and they're so little, and they're just so little. There's five hundred teachers and they're watching them. They turn on the music and it sounds like Alvin and the Chipmunks. It was awful. It was awful. I was heartbroken. So they tried. Like, here's, oh, I can't do Alvin. Can you do Alvin? Help me do Alvin. Yeah, help me do that voice, you know, that, that sound like your helium or something voice. And so they played the song and the kids' voices, the kids were all like Kane's eyes were like this, you know, on the stage. And Brenda and George were all kind of looking at them. And, you know, the, the people doing the song, music, in the auditorium stopped it, were trying to fix it, try it again, still Alvin and the Chipmunks. And Brenda and the kids are starting to get a little anxious. So they tried it a third time and I get up and I said, can you sing a cappella? Because I mean, it was clearly this wasn't going to work. And Brenda says, well, certainly better than that. So the kids sang. I couldn't believe it. Everybody, they were so good. I was so impressed with them and the parents. They, they really were wonderful. I mean, I was astounded. Two kids sang solos.
Will Hankley and Katie Arnes. They did two solos.
They, they were amazing. They were absolutely amazing. I just, I couldn't believe the poets to get up on stage and have your music, the Alvin and the Chipmunks, which was not planned, and to pull it off and to just, you know, just take it right and stride. They were wonderful. They were great. So they did a presentation and then Carol Beck. I think he wrote Wizard of Oz. No, Wizard of Oz. So she bonded the kids for the Wizard of Oz with normal school. So they did a great job. They sang Somewhere Over the Rainbow, which is one of my favorites. So among other things. So it really was a great opening. And I lasted, but it was fine. It was my less opening, so I became rather emotional. So I'm crying to people, but it's all good. And it was, it was a good opening. So off to a good start for the school year.
That's really gonna help them, quite.
Yeah, I was missing that too. Yeah. But that was, that was all good. And again, her intake is here, her update is here. The one thing I did want to make sure to mention, and I, Melissa was kind enough to put this together, was Melissa got the set, part two of the early grades literacy program, and it totaled eighty-four thousand two hundred fifty dollars. So she has done an amazing job of writing and getting competitive grants. So these aren't grants that are entitled to. So she's competing with all the schools across Massachusetts. So it's, it's a very different process. It's, it is much more difficult. The thing about grants, and Allison probably knows this from a little bit more experience with, with schools, but we aren't that school, any of our schools in the districts that qualify for anything. We're not high needs. We don't have a high percentage of low income. Our numbers are pretty good. So it is very difficult for us to win competitive awards. So I was so impressed that Melissa, you know, she goes for everything and she's almost always successful. So I personally am just so impressed with everything she's been able to do for this. So this goes over what the, the literacy grant was, for this year was eighty-four thousand. Last year, I think it was fifty-three thousand eight twenty-five. So it goes through Silver Lake, in case you're wondering, because Silver Lake is where all the grants come through. And then they're awarded out to Halifax and Kingston already, these two are. So she's really been working great with the staff. And we've bought in some professionals who provided some support. The teachers have really stepped forward. I think they really love the support. They've been doing a weekly report that they've been sending out, sharing with the teachers. It's sort of developed teacher leaders, which has been great. So these are the kinds of things that I think when you do it from a bin, really make a difference on school. When somebody tells you from, you know, you will do, there is the same things to buy when it comes from a bin. So these have been great.
So a question.
Sure.
So in terms of Halifax, it says part-time literally, literacy consultant, Halifax kids and reading. So is this a body?
Yes.
Person?
Yep.
Okay.
Comes in and works with our teachers.
Okay. And then the teacher, not directly with the students, or works with the teachers as like an enrichment?
You can probably describe that.
With the teachers. It's a combination.
Yeah.
To do some observations, go in and model, get the last ones, and then. Then they go to regional meetings where they have professional development.
Four times throughout the year?
Major, bigger meetings than just what we had here.
And then Brian, you pulled back to our title.
It was really great.
Awesome.
So it's our, we have K grade teachers and then reading specialists. Love your feedback.
That's great.
Yeah, the teachers have loved it. So it's wonderful additional support. Again, above beyond anything that's important for her job, you know, just what she's bringing to the position, which has been great. Building update, I think we've certainly done that. We'll do that. Bus update, I wanted to just let you know, we did add the extra bus. I had reached out to the bus company to talk a little bit about how they developed the run. So what they basically did was they added a route and they took students off of several buses so that all buses are now equitable in terms of the number of students on the buses. So no buses are overcrowded, so it's split more evenly. The route itself was not done from scratch. So they didn't like look at having ten buses and doing it by areas because that would be extremely time consuming. So they didn't look at bus one will be here. What they did was they had the new bus that sounds like goes along one oh six, on one side and then back on the other side. So they were able to take students off of all buses. So the numbers are equitable on the buses. It has shortened some of the routes, but I don't know that we know timeframe yet. I don't think it's to the point that we can say save ten minutes on each bus. What, when I asked them, I actually wrote to the, to the bus company, I just well talked to them too, was that the numbers are equitably distributed, which we're hoping will cut down on behaviors because we don't have three large children sitting on a small seat, which was one of the big concerns at this point. So next year, assuming we're keeping the ten buses, I think what I would personally like to recommend is that they really look at the bus routes more closely when they have more time and try to figure out, is it make more sense to do this area for one bus and this area for another bus as opposed to sort of at the last minute figuring out a way to get just the numbers done. You know what I mean? Like, I would like to save more time. I believe we should be able to save more time.
So why did they wait to the last minute?
Yeah, and I don't know what to do here too.
Yeah.
They're on the bus, right?
The new bus.
Yeah. I, I don't know if it's then, they waited till the last minute.
We've got a switch of buses where they revive twenty-four and twenty-five. We were twenty-five, now we're twenty-four. So it's changed. Because we used to.
We're still on twenty-five.
Yeah, you're still on twenty-five. Because now it just stops at, and it doesn't do the loop of crap and all that. So, but I did reach out and ask about a switch in the way that the route was done. And they were super receptive and they switched it. And it's great. And it's worked out much better, so.
So some are cut down. So you were twenty-one, right?
Yes, so T one would get picked up last stop before to come here and then first stop off, which was great for him, but not good for the kid who was on the other end of that. You know what I mean?
Last.
So, but I guess my, my issue, this whole bus situation is full A to Alex's point Y. What do you mean they waited till the last minute? We had town meeting in May. We had this discussion with them long before that. So they knew.
I just don't see how it's different than any other song.
Well, yeah. So they knew that this was coming down tight, what he just said. And like, the whole idea here was not to just throw other buses in the mix and like, how are we gonna know if it's working, if it's not being properly run, manned, whatever the word is I'm looking for, executed?
I, I think, you know, when I reached out.
And this isn't, I'm not.
No, no, no.
I'm not the bus company. This is not what we asked for. This is not what we're paying for. We didn't say, we want less kids on the bus, so let's just pick up five kids on every route. That's not.
But the conversation was. Well, he, you know, again, I, I'd written to them. I actually brought, printed out emails. It was, one of the things that concerned was, was that the head council would be lower and the process was to try to make sure that they did not have rooms covering large gaps from area to area. So in other words, kids weren't on these extended runs longer than necessary. So he said that, you know, he couldn't guarantee at the meeting that it would necessarily cut down on time. He had said that and it wasn't positive.
Si, si ta.
Si ta.
But I thought adding the bus and dipping up the route, my understanding was by adding the bus, they could play with the routes and we wouldn't have a problem. Brian says we're still happy. Three buses getting here. So what, what you say, I want to quote this quote.
The one bus that's late, that allowed that is due to the secondary bus.
Right, that's the problem. It's after dropping off middle school and high school kids, it has to get here.
Right.
That's the gap.
He can probably give us the numbers. I mean, I, I think right now, we're all open to that. He knows when a bus pops in here in the morning and he knows when it gets back to the lot. So he has a tracker. So I think when we get a little bit further into the year, we can take a look at those numbers and see if they're, if the minutes really are off.
But if they're, if they're picking up a kid from every bus route, that does mean that they're driving all over creation. These kids, they shouldn't be driving all. And then I have an answer telling me the bus is going down a street three times before picking up their kid. And I'm like, this doesn't even make any sense.
But they're not taking them from all bus routes. If you said they just went up one oh six, bus twenty-two is packed. And we know from last year, it's a, it's like Fight Club on that bus. You know, three kids in a city, the kids allowed to ramp on just, we have no security cameras. So there is no relief, at least over there. And I know twenty-two is nowhere near one oh six.
Well, I don't know, they may have moved some children. And I don't know the route, sorry, I apologize. But my understanding was they tried to balance it so that hopefully twenty-two is not as packed as it was. I don't know that. But that's my understanding from what they told me, that they took children and moved them on buses and then they made it balanced out through one of six. So I don't have the maps. I think once we have the maps, we'll probably make it a lot easier. I just reached out to find out, because of meeting tonight, their take on it. And what he said to me was, the numbers are balanced on buses. So that was.
Okay. Well, that might be his, his goal, but that wasn't our goal. So I think we need to have a conversation with these people. And I'm, to the point where I'm not gonna be nice about it because this is not what we're paying for. Okay.
You know, the maps. Great request. Check out, give out any feedback.
And I mean, I would like to know why he, it was in his words that this was short notice or?
No, no, he didn't say.
Last minute?
No, that, I apologize. That's what I applied. He said that basically to reconfigure all ten buses and redesign the routes is.
Time consuming? Okay, we pay you a lot of money.
True enough, true enough. What they tried to do, their goal was, was to try to balance the numbers. That's how they approached this first step. What I'm saying is, I would like to have it more than just balanced.
Right, they should have tried to balance it and.
Yes.
Putting together sections.
Kids on every bus. If you're picking up a kid every ten walks, it's gonna be a long road. You're not saying anything. Well, that's frustrating because we had a conversation when we sat in that problem, just that conference room.
Yep.
And we specifically said.
That was very, that was.
That was our reason.
And Tristan.
I've had conversations with them also. One of the impression that I have is that this was step one of trying to make the routes work. And what looks good on paper doesn't necessarily work on in reality. So I think.
That's the finding of what's, what's not.
I wish that was clear to us because we, we were tasked with taking a hard line of staying with bus changes. So now, so now it's not we back in our face, but now we're gonna go back to parents who are still upset with us. When we said, we're, we're making these changes to make the bus route better, to try to, you know, make sure everyone's safe getting to school, we're gonna say, hey, this was actually just step one. This is a moldy year, but come on, really? This is frustrating. This is exactly what I didn't think we were gonna be. And that's why they recommended the topic.
Yeah.
I haven't really had.
I haven't heard it.
Many complaints.
How's the, the pickup and drop off?
Exactly the same.
Well, it's usually in the beginning, it's usually.
It's really cool.
That's not.
Yeah, I mean, it's really early to.
I'm, you know, Joey, I'm mad at his response to you. I'm mad that his response was, when we balanced the bus numbers, that was not what we asked you to do. That was a piece of what we asked you to do. But we sat here and we had numerous conversations and we had numerous votes on the issue. And we had a conversation before town meeting because we were all a little like weary about whether or not we were gonna spend thirty grand or whatever, fifty grand or whatever it ended up being, because that's not pennies to solve this problem. And, and when we went into it, we said, we'll give it a year. If it works, we'll continue going. Not, we'll give it a year as like a, as like a maybe step to next year.
About that, Katie, you read that up that this, like he didn't end up saying, we, maybe next year we're gonna, because you said you would like next year if we could take another look at the routes.
Yep.
And try to group it together. And did he even mention that or that's just your idea?
Well, you know, as, you know, I, I reached out to both David and Tristan. And so, you know, basically the route, the routes are now balanced as far as riderships go. Having routes that are both balanced and short is a difficult but not impossible task to achieve. Even if achieved, the ridership would naturally change from year to year as the student population shifts, forcing us to recreate the routes each year to even out the student count. And then David just added on that was, the main focus was on lowering headcount on some of the higher number routes. And those changes reflected times, not necessarily changing, but the headcounts did. So, I mean, he was, you know, they were, I think, from what both of them said and in my conversation, they, their, their primary focus was to try to have the student population on the buses more balanced. And the hope was also that it's shortening. And the hope was also that of shortening routes. I'm just not sure that the routes were shortened as much as I personally was hoping. From what I'm hearing, it sounds like there are some routes that are going back and forth. I have not seen the map, I don't understand why or how. There may be a perfectly great reason, I just don't know it, so.
I mean, we don't have the numbers yet on minutes per ride.
Right.
I think what we can do is, I mean, they have that information, we can just get it once we're in.
So at the next meeting, we'll bring some more concrete information. By then, we should be able to have maps, we should be able to have times on it. We can do another discussion at that point. Also, things should be settled down, because a secondary bus route impacts the elementary on both ends. I mean, you know, that's, that's sharing buses, so, and I don't know the specifics on it. After that, if we have some concrete information, if you'd like to schedule a meeting, I would be sure to arrange that. How's that sound?
Thank you.
That sounds good, okay. So the other thing, I guess that I'm a little bit bitter about, that we talked about before, the fact that we spent that money on this like study, remember? We spent the money on the study, tried to figure out how to alleviate this problem.
Yeah, I do.
And like, so now we're just keep throwing money at it and that's like, I, I.
Yeah, the, the study didn't provide anything.
No, it didn't. Except for, we can't, we shouldn't park our buses in other towns.
That was my point, on that one. Yeah, for those of you who don't know, we hired the Mass School Business Association. Mass Bell, to do a study of our bus, busing situation. And the goal, or some of the thought behind it was, we would love to be able to have our secondary students not have to get up so early. You know, the type of school starts a little bit later to shorten the time on the runs. And they, they did an analysis and all four districts chipped in on it. The report unfortunately did not give us great insights. I suppose what it confirmed was that what we were doing wasn't awful. The other thing that's coming up, so you know, is we're going to be going out for a new bus contract this year. So that's been a good time that we'll be looking. I can tell you from experience, First Student has been the only bus company that has put in a bid for the last.
Last three contracts.
Last few contracts.
We've also talked about changing the contract.
We have, we have tried to figure out if there's another way of doing it, whether or not, and normally that would happen in the spring so that may be something you would work with the new superintendent for unless Christine can pull that off his floor, we'll see. While I'm still around, but, you know, there are some options there with whether or not there's better ways of doing this.
Our contracts, the state's website for contract distribution, like, so the bus contracts.
Silver Lake goes out with issues its own bid and then we beat up bids, I'll talk about that. So it's just Silver Lake reaching and going out to bid. It's published in the newspaper, it's published in documents, it's online, the bids that are available are out there.
So I guess my question is, there's no, and I'm not saying this in a negative way, but it's all reliant on the bus company seeing that bid. Like, this happens to be contracted long, or if you say, why did it go down this road? I didn't know.
So what I do is I send bids up to companies that have contracted, companies that use before. I send it out to the state's website, food and services, and then those are the state ones.
Okay.
So it's the last time, I think I've done ten inquiries and I have forty.
Is there any sort of follow-up?
To see why, yeah. One of the things that I brought into is the numbers of buses.
Meaning?
The company, companies have the numbers of buses just to help, because we run the double, we have the double, double runs between the secondary and elementary. We're waking you, how to your buses, that's been one of the factors. And, you know, I know some other town, there are a couple of business managers that I know that have tried to combine three towns to a bid. The problem is if there isn't enough, there are a few people with sixty buses. So that's kind of been a struggle. There are things that we can do to tweak our contract with specific, specifically to through the information. I think we all know that all that helps with the dollar value associated. So, Joy, as I, we will be going out to bid, this is the last year of our contract, two thousand twenty school year.
And this was, this was on a three-year extension option?
We have done a three-year contract with two one-year extensions. What we've found is that there are fewer that would be willing to come here for just three years.
Yes, but that's why we had the conversation of a long even.
Right.
Five, two threes or something.
Right, so that is, that is an option. We have some that have success with that, extending the time.
Correct, that way get newer buses. The other thing that some districts have incorporated, I guess, or taken on was there's a computerized program that runs bus routes, right now it's done by.
Some computer, but it's mostly done.
Yes, but, but there are programs that we, you would have to purchase an additional. Which whether or not there's some better.
He said that, yeah, we could, there are software programs out there that will do it. Says, and if that's what you want, put it in the contract agreements, we'll be happy to pass along the cost of what it costs to buy it.
Yeah.
So we can pay for it.
Yeah, exactly. So I mean, that's, that's gonna be the part, because you, you know, it's hard to incorporate as we're building a budget. We won't know what the new contract will be. If, I pretty well guarantee it won't be done. It's just a question.
I was upset, it points, it'll go off.
Carrie said, the token, we're here at three spots for people. We're not here for the parents that are happy, although it's worked for. I don't know how many that there are, but I know for myself that I have had fewer phone calls that are traditionally.
Okay.
Are we the sole committee that's frustrated with it?
You're the only one that added a bus, so we, I listed down the extra change that they missed. Great improvement.
Like, we have problems with the other districts. Do you think that there's any need for this additional bus at the upper level? No.
Sorry, I got some questions here, so that's what I'm.
Right, yeah. Now, the kids, the kids pretty much are juniors on drive. And they.
And they stay in, we have light buses for kids that stay there for activities.
We have to have seats on the bus for them, but the secondary buses are not. For kids, the house has a seat on the bus for them.
How is it going in the morning? I remember last year, there was a lot of buses coming super early and the kids were sitting and waiting for a long time. And then we kind of tweaked it at the end of the year anyway. But is it still, like, what time are the buses getting?
Getting back.
I know it's still early, but. Right.
Just dramatically, it's that bus point two, and I just think it's that secondary route geographically. You're trying to cover that whole corner of secondary route down there right away. And it's just geographically, he's getting there late, it's not his fault.
No, no.
I don't know, you taught in high school, delay system's all it wants, all the buses.
What they do is, no, they actually give them an order so that those that have the longest routes will leave first and they have them in that direction they have to leave. They, it is a puzzle to make your own pieces work.
We're a large grid, carry this part of our problem. So it's, you know, it's more complicated than you might think. I mean, it doesn't sound like it should be that hard, but honestly, it, there's a lot to it. You know, what you may need for the elementary level is very different from what you may need for the secondary level in terms of stops and where students are located and it's, it's a complex process. I mean, the, the bus company has been very responsive to us when we've had parent concerns or we've had, you know, as you spoke, as you spoke to me. Again, they have been easy to work with in that sense, so. We'll get the, we'll get the maps, we'll get some times on the buses, bring that to the next meeting and then see if that hopefully, by then, things should be more ease.
Sooner or later, yeah.
And then we'll have more, yeah, comforts.
Correct.
Are we utilizing the group bus stops? Are your kids at a group bus stop or you stop now? Why? Why does that happen? I thought we talked about door doors earlier.
I have gotten into the group stops.
Actually, I'm sorry, I should say, there is one parent that picks up in our driveway, but it's just for her own time-saving, so I never asked her. But I had the same thought the first day with my friend, our roommate. Her neighbor, we looked back, we're supposed to be walking up to the dance.
I have the kids at the bus, I only look in front of mine who stops and there are five kids, so I mean, it's not a huge amount of students.
Oh, you know, I mean, like, you got my front door and forty yards that way, my neighbor diagonally has a driveway that they stop at. And then twenty yards that way, my driveway's in this corner of my area, they stop at that one.
He should be.
Yes, I agree.
Bus stop, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, that was a good thing. I know that the new bus, it was T one's bus, so he's running to the neighbor's house to get off, because the bus driver told him to. So I don't know if it's a, have a discretion of bus driver or what the deal is with that, but he even came home and told me. Oh, he told, she, whatever, told me to get, to go next door, so that's what they're gonna think they have dropped out. So that's my, it's very frustrating, everybody don't know if that's something that's coming from directly from the bus driver or the bus company or, don't know from you guys, but I remember we talked about. Yeah, the times.
We said that, and I said, I'll be ready for group stops, but we don't know when most group stops are in place and how they're determined by then.
Maybe we should get feedback on that as well.
With everybody?
I'm sorry?
Would that be for everybody or?
Every bus should have a group, every bus should have group stops now.
The houses are few and far between where we are and my kids.
Oh, no, 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 only if it's like you can see both drivers.
Okay, because I'm not sending my kids walking down Oak Street to the bus.
No, no, it's not, it's not in inclement weather, like if it's, there's snowbanks as high, that's not, you know, and it's not, you know, in a situation like that, it's only if like your neighbor and yourself. There's no reason they should be stopping fifty yards. You know what I mean?
And that was in the meeting we sat down, that was one of his big complaints. Even, so take off the time, which is obviously important to everybody, but the wear and tear and extra fuel of speeding up to twenty miles an hour and then stopping a hundred yards later, speeding up and stopping a hundred yards later. He's like, it goes to a lot more fuel and we go through a ton of breaks. So that's just more, more cost to get passed on to us.
Every year, the bus company does get a census of where the students are actually located from schools. And that's theoretically how they're deciding where those group stops are, based on the actual whole manager's locations.
Uh, the other thing is kindergarten, if you're tied with kindergarten, they don't do group bus stops. I knew that there was a third factor. Do you have any other input on the bus situation, what we're talking about, before we move on? I have a feeling it's why you're sitting here tonight. Okay.
Bus twenty-two, that's all I can say.
Fight club.
The last thing I have is the REAP grant, I just wanted to let you know we have received it. And it is in the low forties, I can't remember exactly, yeah, I can't remember exactly, maybe forty.
It's actually, almost sort of was last year, it came very much right, seven hundred dollars.
So we have received it again and we're again using it to sort of deal with some of the technology needs that we have in the building and sort of the ongoing updates that are always needed there. The numbers are down, so I'm confident we'll, we'll be next year.
So, question about that, with you leaving us, when do you apply for this REAP grant? And who applies for it? I know that you're part of the process.
It is moments that Joy and I spend.
We have following time, yeah, it's a horrible grant, it's really difficult grant, I don't know why it's a horrible grant. I do Halifax, Christine does, I think it's have what we, we sort of point.
It's an exercise in following direction.
So I, Christine knows how to do it and I will gladly leave that as a present before the next person discusses it.
I just want to make sure that we don't drop the ball on that.
No.
They sent plenty of emails.
They sent a whole lot, you can't forget, that you can't forget. And as I said, I, you know, as you, as you may remember, I was worried because there was so much ordering on that six hundred number.
Right.
I was nervous whether or not we would get it. And then, you know, I found that thing about average daily, it's interesting. But now that the kindergarten class is down, we should be up to fine, so that potential will be able to continue. And I think that will come by then, when we do the next.
Anybody else have their two cents to throw in before we wrap it up? Bob?
No.
You mentioned the home, probably. The town, I think the town updated their web hosting. Now, anything that has to do with us on the town website is broken, is that what you're saying?
I think you are, I'm saying.
Yeah.
Like the link's broken, so you, like, if you look up Halifax Elementary School Committee, for example, if you got the one from, through the district, that one's okay, but if you go to one of the ones that's hosted at the town page, the link's broken.
All right.
Which I know, I know the town.
The town has changed, yeah.
Are you going to, you go Charlie or you, we don't think that?
I think you can call.
Please.
Thank you, Colonel. Thank you. Because I know we finished shooting in the past, we're gonna try to click on our calendar. There was time, so now we got six thirty, maybe it starts, they really start at six, so we'll get it together. All right, we don't have any further concrete session tonight. So, please do remember, September twenty-third is an early release day. Grade seven to twelve, released at ten forty-five, K through six, released at twelve noon, there's no lunch served that day. October fourteenth is Columbus Day, so obviously there's no school. And the fifteenth is our next school committee meeting at six P M, right here, in this building, in this room. So that's all we have for tonight, we can wrap it up and we should return.
So, check it.
All right, Kevin? Hi. Thank you, guys.